So it looks like we're ready to go. And so, just a few minutes late, so I'll call the meeting to order and welcome everyone and do a roll call. And I know that trustee Smith had an obligation that has him not present tonight. And then, as you'll, as people are aware, we have one open seat on the board, which we are in the process of getting applicants for, so we're down one just by that opening. So I think everyone-
Trustee Newbold and Duggar.
Oh, and trustee Newbold and Duggar. Trustee Newbold's helping with the school activity, and trustee Duggar had some other activity that he couldn't be here. But we do have a quorum, and so we'll go ahead and stand and do the, say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we move on to item number three on the agenda, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. We typically don't try to move too many things around unless there's a compelling reason to do so, but is there any request from any trustee to revise the agenda as it has been set?
I have a question.
Sure.
Didn't we do items B3 and B4 last time? B3 and B4, the resolution for election assistance?
They, that is to actually request the assistance for next year, because if we don't do it and file it in a timely fashion, we incur the expense and take on the obligation to do it. So it's actually something for next year that we want to get in by the June 1 deadline. Does that make sense?
I just thought we talked about it at the last meeting.
Yeah. Okay, with that clarification, then we'll go ahead and approve the agenda as it stands. Number four indicates to approve minutes, but there are no board meeting minutes that have been prepared at this point, so we'll move on to five. And five is public comment on non-agenda items. That means public comment on an item that we won't be either getting information on or having discussion and taking any action on. It's a time when anyone who wants to bring anything to the forefront can, that would impact the district, has an opportunity to let us know that there's something you're thinking about. And so we ask a few things of anyone who provides public comment, both for non-agenda items and agenda items. If you can state your name, and if you have an unusual spelling of either your first or last name, provide that so Lenora can catch that. The second thing is if you represent an organization, to identify the organization. The third thing is to limit your comments to three minutes. And the fourth thing is that we don't allow any public comment on specific persons or individuals in the district, because they have privacy rights, so we're not allowed to talk about specific people or specific, um, things like that. So if, you know, just take that into caution, but any general concerns you have, we'd love to hear from you. So please go ahead.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Jenny Dixon. You've seen me here before. I'm here as a parent of a sophomore at Hellgate High School. And you may have received a letter from me, and I'm here to address that tonight, which is concerns that I and other parents and students have about the Finance Academy at Hellgate High School. First of all, I am so grateful to this body and the superintendent and the community in general for recognizing the importance of these academies at the various schools. They have proven to be invaluable to my daughter and to many other students as well. And we have been attempting to get some clarification for, pretty much during this entire year, about that from the school administration, and have had misinformation or miscommunication, conflicting information, and oftentimes no information, which has made it really difficult to formulate a thoughtful response and bring anything before you. So I am starting from a place, I feel, of not having a complete picture, but what I can tell you is that information over the course of the year that's been shared with me by Finance Academy teachers, Finance Academy students, the top administration at the school, have all said, well, the Finance Academy is, we're taking applications, but we, we're not really doing it anymore. When, when the students signed up for this, they enrolled with a commitment letter committing to a program that now appears is not being, that commitment is not being honored. And I say that because, over the course of this year, the, the school administration has indicated that, oh, you know, we've decided to take the requirements down from six to four. Oh, it's probably not going to go on the transcript anymore. Oh, we're just going to call it something else. And so we've been trying to request some time to meet with, with the administrative staff, and only after that letter was received did someone actually get to meet with administration today. So there's a lot of confusion, and I'm, and I know the teachers are confused, the business partners are confused, and the students certainly are confused, not sure how many credits they need to take, not sure if they need to do a job shadow or an internship, and not at all certain if there's going to be any recognition on their transcript for the work they put in that they committed to do. And so I am here to, first of all, thank you so much for preparing this, which is our five-year plan, and indicating a benchmark by June 2019 that there will be at least one thematic academy implemented, career academy implemented, in each urban high school in Missoula. And to hear that not only is it possibly going away, but not getting full disclosure as a parent is really disappointing. So I'm, I'm here to follow another recommendation in this plan, which is to hold you accountable. I want you to make sure that our students are able to benefit from this amazing program that was created with a lot of effort, enthusiasm, fanfare, and work by the business partners and the teachers and the administration. So, in addition to feeling like this program is not being supported at its most basic level, I also want to call your attention to what was intended when the prior superintendent described this, that courses, core courses, like English, math, and social studies, will be supplemented with real world examples using economics. Special courses for each branch of study will involve in classroom presentations and instructions by local business leaders. Outside of the classroom, students will go job shadowing, take field trips, get business, hands-on experience in the business field. The teachers at Hellgate do not feel empowered to do this, nor are the courses being set up to reflect this. So I would like to ask this board to formulate a response to what is the status of the Finance Academy at Hellgate High School. I've probably gone over my three minutes, so I thank you so much for your time, and I really hope that we will get a response, a public response. I'm not optimistic of getting one from the school administration, which is why I'm here asking you for one. Thank you so much.
Thanks. I apologize, I've got the bug that's going around, so I've got kind of a chronic cough. I apologize. I had, I had time for the disruption.
I'll apologize as well, I'm leaving right away. I'm supposed to be at soccer practice, and so I apologize to you guys. And thank you. Good evening, and thanks for the time to offer you a perspective. I come to you tonight as a longtime employee of the district, an elected union representative, and a citizen taxpayer. Briefly, I have two specific requests from the trustees of the Missoula County Public Schools, and thank you, chairwoman, for the clarification of the rules regarding public comment, and I appreciate the delicacy of my requests here. My first request is I'm asking the board to do something I've never asked the board to do when I've appeared before you, and that is to micromanage and investigate personnel relationships in the district as they impact employment practices and processes for all MCPS employees. The second request is I'm asking the board to construct a transparent, public, reliable evaluation tool and audit of district-level administrators other than the office of the superintendent, who already submits to a public and transparent evaluation process. Why am I asking for these two items? To my first request, I have never come to the board to micromanage anything before tonight. As an employee of MCPS, I know that no employee is legally allowed to discuss issues of concern as they are connected to personnel. It's simply and correctly forbidden to discuss the status of another employee in an organization. My observation of the interactions currently taking place between employees of MCPS is critical. I observe significant personal and occupational discord among employees of MCPS, both management and labor, which hinders the ability of all employees to carry out the functions of our various positions. I would maintain that the productive energies of the district have been hamstrung by these personal, and therefore personnel, conflicts. In effect, I'd suggest that two armies have been constructed in our district. If I'm right, then our district is not holding true to its mission to work collaboratively, which I'm sure concerns each and every one of you. I maintain that school board trustees, working as a whole or in committee, are the only people who can force these armies to stop fighting without taking a side. You have all been made aware of an element of this armed conflict in the discussion of the proposed ELA curriculum, an internal district conflict which has now made its way into the public press. Why is a curriculum up for conflict or discussion in our community? For me, from a distance, I have observed certified employees working collaboratively to organize a service provided to our students, and I've observed central district-level administration who have chosen to not work collaboratively in providing a specific service of the district. That's why there's so much conflict. The people whom you've hired to provide educational services to the community, including myself and the community's children, are in conflict. Further, I'd suggest that approving a curriculum is not the issue you're actually facing. A guaranteed and viable curriculum might be a difficult process to accomplish, but it's also not relative to the functioning of the district ultimately. You have been distracted from what's really important, because talking about guaranteed and viable people, or guaranteed and viable workers, is clearly going to create real conflict and hard feelings, and taking sides on personnel is generally not seen as an admirable quality in a leader. Let's remember the most important thing. It's all about relationships. Though it may be the most difficult aspect of any job, the construction of functional relationships solve all of the problems. And I'd submit that the level of functional relationships in our district is at a very low ebb. I maintain that your primary job as a school board trustee is to assure the community you represent that all of the employees of the district are adhering to the mission and established processes of the district. You are the conduit for confirming that all of us who work for this district are aware of the page we're working on, and we're all on the same page. Currently, I do not see labor or management even using the same book. Specifically, that is why I'm asking this board to delay implementation of the ELA curriculum at a minimum in order to thoroughly investigate the previously mentioned personal and occupational discord among MCPS employees. To my second point, teachers and building-level administrators are assessed and evaluated in a number of transparent and fair ways. It strikes me that district-level administrators are freed of this scrutiny. Greater transparency in the choice and continued employment of leadership at the highest level of any organization should be a primary function, goal, of a community-elected school board. I would like to see this school board enact measures which ensure significantly greater transparency in hiring and continued employment of district-level administrators. Thanks for your continued service to our community in Missoula County Public Schools. Best of luck to you, and again, I apologize for leaving so early. Oh, I'm sorry. Gary Stein, teacher at Sentinel High School. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Derek Nordberg. I'm a former graduate from Sentinel, a current student at the university, and a part-time tutor here at Missoula County Public Schools. I want to come this evening just to possibly bring awareness to the board and also hopefully action later on by the board in regards to specifically the type of students that I teach or I tutor. So I tutor students who do not speak English as their first language, so that's immigrants, refugees, and exchange students. And I've experienced them over a wide age range, and each one has required very different needs for, I had to adapt to. I've put in about 110 hours of volunteer service this school year, and these students mean a lot to me. So, uh, next year, I'm not sure if I'll be able to volunteer and tutor, and I don't know what the future will hold with these students. And I was hoping that the board could come up with eventually a program to make sure that these students who do not speak English, in some cases, get the education that they need to learn how to read, learn how to write, and learn how to speak, because some of them are thrown up into upper-level classes without the basic knowledge of how to even write. And I've personally thought about how this would be. I've lived in a foreign country, I've lived in Hungary for two years. I was there in the middle of the refugee crisis, so refugees, for me, are very, very important to me, and they mean a lot. They've gone through a lot of bad things, and I feel like we're kind of letting them down here. We bring them into the country, we give them a good place to live, and we give them an education, and I feel like our education's failing them a little bit. I'm only one person, and I can't, can't solve it all. And I would really love to see some greater action within the community. Soft Lanning, Missoula, with the city government, with MCPS on working to make a better system for these, these individuals who, who really have had a rough start in life. So that's what my comment was this evening. I'm grateful for all the work you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Uh, my name, for the record, is Betta Leon Del Sordo. That's B-E-T-T-A, last name L-Y-O-N-D-E-L-S-O-R-D-O. Thank you for your time today. I'm Betta, I'm a senior at Big Sky High School, and I wanted to bring attention today to the fact that some of us are concerned about the purchase, or the purchase and process of acquiring caps and gowns for graduation in Missoula County Public Schools. Last fall, a lot, all of the students at all of the high schools were required to attend marketing presentations by the company, Jostens. We were told we had to buy caps and gowns to graduate, and we were also marketed all sorts of things, from class rings to keychains and sweatshirts, and this was during class time. We were really concerned about this, because it was also not mentioned at some of these presentations that students could also borrow caps and gowns to attend graduation. And so we're concerned that students have to purchase something from a private company in order to graduate from free public education, and that we're being required to attend these marketing presentations during school. So, last fall, some of us wrote a letter to the board about this issue, and we also got in touch with the superintendent's office, and they did follow up and said that there was some changes that were proposed, and we also followed up with some of the high schools, and we found that it was a little inconsistent across each of the high schools in the city about what kind of changes were being proposed, and whether they were required, and how they were being documented. And so today, we've written another letter, you can find it on page 11, along with reference to the district policy on marketing in schools, just requesting that we would have more documentation about any of these proposed changes, and we'd like to see written documentation for the students, and parents, and the public about how this is being addressed at each school, and if Jostens has been notified of any changes in policy, and if students at each school are still being required to go to these marketing presentations from a private company, and if the schools are allowed to just make these decisions on their own, or if students, if it's same across all the schools. So we, yeah, we're just trying to figure out what has happened with this, and we really hope that something can be done, because for a lot of the kids in the district, something like a $60 cap and gown is quite a purchase, and if we're trying to champion a free public education, students shouldn't have to face that barrier. Some schools have a few caps and gowns for kids to borrow, but they're not very well-publicized, and sometimes they only have a short supply, or it's only for kids who are low-income. And for those of us who just want to keep this out of the waste stream, as part of the Zero Waste Initiative, it's also an issue for these disposable gowns. So thank you for your time today, and we hope that we can see some documentation of this process. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Melanie Charleston, president, Missoula Education Association, vice president, Montana Federation of Public Employees. On Thursday, May 10th, I emailed the Missoula Education Association's K-5 Building Representative, and I asked for some clarification regarding the comments made during the ELA presentation on Tuesday, May 8th. Within my email, I said, "I have no desire to get into any debate over materials, but I am concerned that MEA members who are not on the task force were not asked for input, provided updates, or an opportunity for feedback," because that was what I was continually told throughout the year from members. I asked these building reps a variety of questions, including, "Did you discuss the ELA review process, and were you provided updates during October or January district-wide grade-level meetings? Were you engaged in conversations, or did you have an opportunity for questions about the ELA materials process and adoption at the October and January meetings? Were members of the task force asked to seek feedback from you in your building meetings? If so, what type of information was shared, and did you have a path to add input? Did your principal, at any time this year, provide you an update and an opportunity for input or to review materials?" The comments I'm sharing this evening are condensed for time, but they do represent all nine K-5 buildings. I received the following comments from buildings without representation on the ELA task force, namely Cold Springs, Paxson, and Rattlesnake. So these are words from your K-5 employees. Quote, "We did not discuss the ELA review process and weren't provided updates in the October-January meetings. Is it normal for our school to have no idea what the programs are that are being proposed and no input in the process? We did not discuss the ELA adoption at either admin building PLC, as far as I remember. Both those PLCs were spent comparing star scores and common assessments. Our building did not have any ELA task force members, so we were in the dark the whole time. Our principal mentioned the process during a 10-minute stand-up meeting, but this decision had already been made. We did not receive any information regarding a new adoption, nor any update regarding the curriculum review at either of our district data dialogue meetings in the fall or winter. We did ask some questions, but we did not receive answers. As far as I remember, we were told of a task force, but I don't recall specifically hearing of the process or where they were in the screening of materials." So again, those are from Cold Springs, Paxson, and Rattlesnake. These are now responses from buildings with members on the task force. Again, these are their words. "Some of our task force members liked the process, simply because they couldn't participate if the meetings were held outside of the school day. However, they are all in agreement that it is in the best interest of our district if we follow the procedure outlined in the contract, or at least have representation from each building. Our task force member was told she wasn't supposed to even discuss it with us as a team, but she did informally. We were told basically that the ELA task force was working on curriculum, and we would hear more later. Regarding feedback, none officially. I asked our task force member what was going on, but she was not directed to inform us. We had no opportunity to look at materials during the process, not even letting us know what materials they were looking at. After the decision was made, we were told we could go to the admin building and look at the chosen materials. We did not hear anything until our principal mentioned it at a staff meeting in late March or early April, despite the fact we had a staff member on the committee. The first we heard of the process was May 10th, at our 8 to 8:25 meeting with TNL. We couldn't have questions because there wasn't enough time. We were never asked for input. We knew nothing of the review process or any decisions about the adoption until the May 1 staff meeting, when it was announced a recommendation for the adoption of Ready Gen had been set. Suffice it to say, I think our staff was not informed during the process. I did think Donna from Ready Gen presented well, although they did not give enough time for her. The instructional materials seem current with best practices, yet the 90 to 120-minute block is totally unrealistic and sets us up for failure. We have no way to meet this expectation unless we cut out other things. This is my greatest frustration with teaching today. I feel cheated out of a voice in this whole process. No point was our rep asked to gather input or inform us on the process. I don't feel like people have buy-in on implementing the materials if they adopted, especially if they are hard to transform into the daily five model, or if we do have a lot of work to make this model work with materials. I'm worried if adopted, it may be a waste of money." End quote from members. To conclude, K-5 members who were not on the task force were informed of the selection of the Ready Gen materials in building meetings, but those occurred roughly between April 19th and May 10th. Last week at the district grade-level meetings, a presentation of the chosen materials was shared. However, not all K-5 members were able to attend because of some lack of subs, which is a continual concern. The comments this evening are intended to provide insight that frustrations regarding communication and transparency of the process are not only at the high school level. Missoula Aces sincerely hopes we can work collaboratively with the district in the future. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Hi, my name is Dave Severson, and I currently work for MEA MFT, the union, but I'm not here in that capacity so much tonight. I'm more, I'm here more as a historian for you all, because before that job, I was a 20-year English teacher at Sentinel High School. And in my last two years in English duty, I was the department chair, managing and monitoring curriculum implementation, mentoring and training members of the department, and during my time there, I was involved in the curriculum review process at least seven times. I would urge the board to reject the current ELA curriculum adoption. After I looked at the Missoulian story and reviewed some of the materials, I was kind of shocked. To limit the teachers in Missoula to one program in the high school and one set of rigid materials will inhibit teacher creativity, dumb down the curriculum, and do what no child left behind has been attempting to do, teacher-proof the curriculum. While at Sentinel, I was blessed to have access to a teacher bookroom of over 80 titles of every variety of novels, nonfiction, plays, anthologies, workbooks, that a talented and diverse department could pick and choose from. All of these materials were aligned to standards, and the curriculum was followed, but the teacher was the creator of a customized menu of items that became personal and artistically in tune to the individual teacher. That situation also existed at Hellgate and Big Sky, and those conditions continue to exist here to this day, a creative, diverse environment of gifted teachers of every sort. This program's minimum requirements for reading and writing are far less than they should be. My class- My class, for example, when I taught included at least six varied books and eight significant writing assignments every year. This new program has two required books and a minimal basic curriculum that is considerably dumbed down for what students can do. Please don't eliminate quality curriculum and teaching in Missoula. What I meant earlier by teacher-proofing the curriculum is that there's a trend to require teachers to follow a prescribed curriculum step by step, day by day, sometimes even minute by minute with instructions to ensure that all teachers do exactly the same thing. That allows a technician, if you will, to just follow the steps in a cookbook with no creativity. The art of teaching is gone. That is why many have asked you to reject this plan. Do not destroy creativity for the individual teacher. A final reason for not choosing this program is that I believe not all teachers were authentically involved in the curriculum process, as you just heard, and their voice is not being heard. Some fear the fix was in at the start and a top-down decision was made to implement certain rigid programs against the will of the teachers. For these reasons, please vote against this curriculum adoption at your next meeting and preserve teacher voice and creativity. And thanks to you all so much for your service on the board.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on non agenda items?
Good evening. Thank you for your time, trustees. My name is Aaron Fortin. I'm an English teacher at Big Sky High School. My intention of public comment is to support the position of those teachers who have already voiced concerns about the adoption of the curriculum in question for high school students in Engage New York. Although I cannot speak directly for all teachers at Big Sky High School, I can confidently say that many of our English teachers have continually expressed valid concerns about autonomy, efficacy, and fidelity in regards to the Engage New York curriculum during our department meetings and in meetings with teaching and learning. In regard specifically to the Engage New York curriculum, I would like to share with you briefly some information I hope will shed light on the curriculum review for MCPS. Through all this process, we may have perhaps failed to ask the very people who have made the most expertise on it, those in New York. In regard specifically to this curriculum, this morning I spoke with Dan Kenley. He's the Director of Policy and Program Development for the State of New York Teachers Union. I asked him specifically about the Engage New York curriculum and he relayed to me some of the following information, which is consistent with other critics amongst other New York reform groups, teachers, and parents, and administrators. Engage New York was funded through rates of the top money, which was funded to the tune of $800 million federally. Engage New York was not created by teachers, as has been the longstanding position of teaching and learning. Engage New York was created by private educational consultancy firms who received substantial monetary incentives by way of fellowship via the Board of Regents of New York for writing the curriculum. The entirety of the curriculum was written by educational consultants, read for profit, and not by teachers. This is important to note in regard to our district because it would seem that a wealth of curriculum already exists, which may include advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and other various iterations of curriculum already aligned to Common Core standards. I'm concerned that the hard, brilliant work of many teachers in the district could be discarded without a sustained and valid investigation regarding its seemingly already-proven efficacies. According also to New York State teachers, another primary concern regarding Engage New York is that they were unable to follow the scripts in the curriculum. The pace of the curriculum was not realistic and they stated an incompatibility between the theoretical framework of the implementation and its actual implementation in the classroom. The position of the New York State Teachers Union, as expressed by Mr. Kenley, is that the curriculum should only serve as a resource and not as an adopted curriculum. This was emphasized as a major point of contention by New York teachers who attempted to implement the full curriculum with fidelity. Although teaching and learning maintains the same position, I question the intent long-term. I quote from the MCPS newsletter last week, "While the Engage New York curriculum does come with detailed and scripted lesson plans, our intention is not to require a teacher utilize every scripted element if the teacher already demonstrates instructional competency in that area." The "if" seems like an imposing caveat to the curriculum. What sort of interventions will take place if the teacher cannot demonstrate instructional competency? The implicit notion is the teacher whose students do not test proficiency would be liable for delivering the newly adopted curriculum not on a voluntary basis, but as a teaching intervention. Also, the intent seems clear, full adoption of the scripted curriculum the year after next for all high schools. I again cite the newsletter, "Implementation of K-38 materials is recommended for the fall of 2018. High school materials will be implemented by ELA teachers who opt-in during the 18-19 year with data collection and evaluation informing full implementation during the 19 and 20 year." There were also major concerns raised by early childhood experts in New York who maintained that the Engage New York curriculum is developmentally inappropriate. In this regard, I too question the appropriateness of the suggested text offered by Engage New York, specifically as a ninth-grade teacher. I'm wary of the ninth-grade curriculum, which represented by, is represented by a remarkable amount of nonfiction that is not necessarily accessible to students with varying aptitudes, lexical functions, and does not include diverse cultural perspectives. This is also a concerning aspect in terms of our constatational mandate to teach IEFA. According to New York teachers, a standardized testing via Pearson Testing Group, which New York State has at this point divorced itself from, was aligned with the Engage New York curriculum and Common Core standards. There has been remarkable public dissent in regards to this testing at this point in the state of New York. This from the New York State Allies of Public Education. Over 225,000 students across all demographics and schools, school districts, and grades three through eight have refused to take part in New York State's 2017 Common Core assessments. These standardized tests, aligned with Common Core and the Engage New York curriculum, as articulated by the New York Teachers Union, Kenley states, are not a good measure of student aptitude. As it stands, the recommendation of the MCPS administration has an implicit premise. The curriculum stands on its own and is not variable to teacher delivery or student aptitudes. I again quote the most recent newsletter, "A guaranteed and viable curriculum provides the opportunity to learn for all students despite the school or the teacher responsible for delivering it. The real point is to ensure that every teacher dedicates the same instructional time to meeting the same key content area standards with the same materials in the same sequence each year to ensure that all students receive a guaranteed and viable curriculum." The premise and conclusion would follow if I were to apply this to a teaching methodology in the classroom. If you read this text, not this one, and you use these same resources and materials, then, conclusion, your students will learn how to read and therefore achieve success despite their individual aptitude, a teacher's individual training and pedagogy, or the school or home environment of the students. Apparently, the curriculum is all. The premise and the conclusion are not compatible and therefore the conclusion cannot hold true in relationship to the aforementioned theoretical framework of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. "The guaranteed and viable curriculum, which is in my mind a polite euphemism for standardization, does not ensure viability, nor is standardization expressed best practice of organizations like the National Council of Teachers of English, who are openly critical of standardized curriculum and testing." From a policy research brief from the National Council of Teachers of English. As a result of spending more time on institutional tasks like these, teachers have less time for instruction in their own classrooms. One study found that teachers lose between 60 to 110 hours of instructional time in a year because of testing the institutional tasks that surround it. Instruction is also diminished by mandatory curriculum that have been developed to prepare students for standardized tests. Such curriculum requires teachers to use prepared materials, which they did not develop and which may not address the needs of actual students in their classes. Based upon the rejection of testing methodologies in New York and widespread vocal opposition to Engage New York as a curriculum model in New York, as well as the concerns of many parents, teachers, and administrators in MCPS, why should we move towards an adoption of the same curriculum? If there continues to be questions and concerns about the curriculum, shouldn't we allow for more dialogue, investigation, and evaluation? Trustees, I ask that you consider these remarks as you move through your review process and know that personally, as a teacher invested in their craft, I find the current proposed curriculum to be unsuitable for our current needs in this district. Thank you sincerely for your time.
Thanks. Any other public comment on non agenda items? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the other items on the agenda. Item 6A is the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report. It's found on page 15 and it's routine Health Insurance Trust Fund Report for the month of April 2018. 6B is announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you. There are some items listed in the packet on page 16, trustees. I would call your attention to the fact that this is a four-day school week for students. Friday, May 25th will be no instructional day for students K-12. Monday, May 28th is Memorial Day and we'll observe that holiday and all buildings will be closed. So essentially, this week and next week are both four-day weeks and then we're into graduation. Unbelievable at this point in time. So a number of year-end functions coming into play. Thursday, May 31st at 3:00 PM in the Sentinel High School cafeteria, we will recognize those certified and classified staff members who are retiring this year and I would encourage trustees to consider attending if you're available. Thursday, May 31st, Willard Alternative High School program will celebrate their graduation at 7:00 PM in the U of M Music Recital Hall. Saturday, June 2nd, the Adams Center will be busy. All three urban high schools and our adult education program will celebrate their graduations in that facility. Big Sky High School at 9:00 AM, Hellgate High School at 12:00 PM, Sentinel High School at 3:00 PM, and the Adult Education Program at 5:30 PM. Sunday, June 3rd, we'll celebrate graduation at Seeley Swan High School at 1:00 PM. Thursday, June 7th, we'll celebrate the promotion activities at the three middle schools. Meadow Hill Middle School will kick it off at 5:30 PM in the Sentinel High Gymnasium. CS Porter will convene at 6:00 PM in the Big Sky High School Cafeteria. And Washington Middle School will conduct their ceremonies at 7:30 PM in the Sentinel High School Gymnasium. Friday, June 8th, will be the last day of school. That will be a half-day of instruction and a half-day dedicated for staff closeout. We are scheduled for regular board meetings in June to be held on June 12th and June 26th. And as a final note, I'd like to recognize trustee Ann Wake. Ann has recently been appointed to the Certification Standards and Practices Advisory Committee. As you know, Ann is also MTSBA president. She's a glutton for punishment, but we appreciate the level of engagement that she's demonstrated and her continued willingness to take on these tasks on behalf of students and staff and the Montana education community. So thank you, Ann.
And now we move on to any announcements from trustees.
I, I want to say something about the school shooting that took place in Texas last week, but before I say something about that, I just want to thank everybody who brought public comment tonight. This was a particularly moving evening of, of caring people, bringing difficult problems to us. And I just can't say enough how much I appreciate that, that people care enough to bring these issues up to us. I especially want to thank Derek for what is clearly a very great passion that he has to serve members of our community. So thank you, Derek. And one of the speakers said something about how we need to be held accountable. And I just want to say that as, as one of the trustees and I speak for all of us, I'm sure, we, that's why we're here, is to be accountable. And we will, mostly through the administration members that you see here and people throughout the school district, we will address these problems that you have brought to us. And it's very important that we do that. That's why we wanted to be on the school board. That's why the administrators here want to be administrators, so we can take care of these things for you. So I just want to lay that out there very clearly and also to say that I, I find it extraordinarily difficult to be in a public position like this and not be able to engage in a dialogue when people bring topics to us. And I, I want to apologize for that. It's state law. We have no power to do anything about it, but it is very, very difficult, as I'm sure you can imagine, to sit here and listen to people's very real issues and problems and not be able to even ask you questions. So that is a problem with Montana law and again, I apologize for that. What I came to this evening to, to speak about before the speakers was that my heart breaks again, as all of yours do, for the students and teachers who died on Friday in another school shooting. And I know that people are very, very concerned about their own lives, about their children's lives, about, you know, their parents' lives if their, if their parents are teachers. There is a lot, there are a lot of people in our community who are in the school buildings every day. And when something like this happens, we are reminded again about how vulnerable we are. I do want to say, this is another thing about being accountable. We are very tuned in to this issue and, you know, a lot of the money from the bonds is going into making the school safer. And I know people are concerned about that and they've come to us with questions and concerns about that. And I do want to refer people to Superintendent Thane's remarks at a city council committee meeting, I think it was May 9th, it was a Wednesday, and it's available on the city council website, but he spoke very articulately and I thought very encouragingly about all the work that's going on in the district, not only in keeping our buildings safe and training our employees, but also all the work that's going on to make sure that nobody, no student is, is overlooked when they have troubles and, you know, troubles that could lead to some of the incidents that we've seen in recent years. So I apologize for the length of that comment, but I, I do want people to, to know that we are human beings who have taken on these responsibilities and we will, we will take care of you.
Thanks. Any other comments or announcements from trustees? Seeing none, then thanks, Heidi. We'll move on to the consent agenda. There is one item on the consent agenda, which is to approve the revenue and expenditure reports for April 2018. The consent agenda is a means by which items that we routinely see are presented to the board for approval. By putting them on the consent agenda, it means we won't discuss them because we see them in a routine fashion. Any trustee has the ability, if they have any questions, to pull it off the consent agenda and therefore have a discussion, but we still take public comment on any item that's on the consent agenda. And so first, I would ask if there's a motion to approve the attached revenues and expenditure reports for April 2018, moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Second, and by trustee Lorenzen. And as I indicated, the board won't be discussing these because we see them in a routine manner, but if there's any public comment on the report that is the attached revenue and expenditure report, please come to the podium.
I do have a question. I'm sorry if I missed that in the, the.
Yeah, there's no questions on the consent. Do you want to pull it off the consent report so you can have a discussion? You're allowed, any single trustee can pull it off the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to give a call. There's a big long report that starts at page 17 that's not part of what this is. Is part of the consent agenda here? And so I do, just, that's my question.
It should be.
Okay. So the stuff on the consent, you actually start from page 17 there, it's been 24.
Okay, that's a, yeah, that's a clarifying question. Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if you had a question about a specific item.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was just mis-page, paginated. Okay? Is that clear to everybody then? It does start at 17, it goes, so it's specific details and then it does move into the more general reports that we see each month as well, but thanks for that request to clarify. Good question. So with that clarification, is there a motion to approve the attached revenue and expenditure report for April 2018? Okay, motion and second, so yes, we did that. So, and any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the attached revenue and expenditure reports for April 2018, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Okay? And then we're on to 8A1, which is an update on the Washington Middle School International Baccalaureate and Dual Language Program. It's informational only and Mrs. Robitaille will be introducing Mrs. Lazlovic for this update.
Thank you. Good evening, board and trustees. My name's Julie Robitaille and I'm one of the executive regional directors and I am lucky enough to get to represent and work with Washington Middle School as one of my nine schools. It's been a great pleasure to work with Casey Lazlovic this year and in her first year as principal at Washington Middle School. She served as assistant principal for three years prior, but assumed the role this year as principal and has really worked diligently to prepare her school to meet the needs of rising fifth graders next year. She worked closely with her colleagues at her three feeder schools, Peter Halloran at Paxson, Pam Wright at Rattlesnake, as well as. at Paxson, Pam Wright at Rattlesnake, as well as Susan Anderson at Lewis &amp; Clark. She reached out to parents and received feedback and brought her staff along throughout this process this year. So, she's here tonight to give us all an update on where we stand with Washington Middle School moving forward. Thanks, Casey.
Thank you. Before I get started, I'm just saying I'm not sneaking out for any other reason than to attend my son's baseball game after this is over. So, earlier this year, I informed you about Washington Middle School applying to be an IB candidate school. This will actually give every student in the building an opportunity for language acquisition. Students will be part of engaging interdisciplinary units as well as community projects. In addition to that, this coming year, we will be offering our dual-language immersion students two classes in Spanish. One will be media arts in Spanish, and the second class will be Spanish language acquisition. Together, those will be 90 minutes of Spanish instruction each day, which is actually equivalent to what they're getting at Paxson Elementary this year. So, we're really excited for the opportunities we can provide all of our students at Washington. And as we wrap up this year, we look forward to next.
Any questions for Casey? Seeing none, any public comment on this?
No, I'm sorry, I did.
Question? Sorry, no, I just, I missed.
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you for the update on what's going to be happening. Obviously, there's a ton of public interest and parent-community interest in this topic. And we've heard from many, many parents who have really strong opinions about what they'd like to see going forward. I have a couple of questions about how that two periods a day is going to both impact Washington and impact the middle school experience of the students who are coming in. So, 90 minutes a day is about a third of their day?
Not quite, but close to, yes. And so, the media arts will be an exploratory class. So, that will be, that's something all middle school students are offered, are exploratory classes. And the other part will be built into a homeroom time.
Okay. So, my question, I'm just going to ask both of them, and then I'll just let you roll. The first question has to do with whether this means that the Paxson students are in effect going to be kind of, because of their schedule, in a track where they will be interacting primarily with students who are coming out of Paxson. Because one of the things that, of course, happens at middle school is that kids mix and flow, and they make new friends and things, you know, cross-pollinate. So, I'm wondering what, how that's going to change their experience. That's one. And then number two is what's happening with staff. So, does this necessitate reorganizing staff, moving people around, changing people's positions? How you manage, how this is sort of logistically working out?
So, for the tracking piece, that was a big priority for myself and staff, not to track students. And so, by offering the exploratory as well as the homeroom time, students will still be part of, Paxson students will be mixed with Rattlesnake and Lewis &amp; Clark students throughout their day, with the exception of those two times. And so, throughout the day, they will, it will be a regular middle school experience for them. The second question, as for staffing, we will have Spanish, actually, we've hired two Spanish teachers that will support that, as well as a teacher that will co-teach with a Spanish teacher to incorporate the media arts. So, we have a current Spanish teacher and added one additional Spanish teacher for the year. So, it's just one additional.
Any other questions from board members? Trustee Beers?
Just as an update, if you can speak to any engagement by special education teachers or paraeducators in, at this point, in implementing either the Spanish immersion or IB to engage their students once it's implemented?
So, all, when we first started the discussions of IB and dual-language immersion, when I met with grade-level teams, special education teachers were part of those discussions. We still want students of, in special education, to be part of interdisciplinary units and have opportunities for language acquisition, so they will have, or dual-language immersion, they will have an opportunity to take part in any of those activities.
Trustee Decker again?
Thanks. I have lots of questions. So, is this, the two periods a day, is that something that is the plan long-term going forward, or is that a one-year plan?
So, that, I mean, we, as we move forward with IB, we'll be working with a consultant. We've also had a lot of discussions with a dual-language immersion consultant over the year who has IB experience. And so, we will plan to continue doing two classes per day. I've also started discussions with some of our after-school programs like Flagship, and so trying to give kids additional opportunities.
And I think my last question for the moment is related to, shoot, lost it.
Okay. Okay, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around this. So, throughout the day, there is going to be IB classes and dual-language classes. I guess, you know, how does that, how does that look in difference to one of the other middle schools?
So, IB is not really, they won't be classes. It's more of a framework in how the delivery or the instructional approaches. So, for example, this interdisciplinary unit where teams of teachers, which, quite frankly, at Washington, we do a lot of it already, where content areas are working together to build a unit of study, bringing maybe English and social studies together. So, IB is not necessarily classes, but just the framework that guides the instructional practice.
Okay. Thank you.
We obviously heard a lot tonight about climate and process. And so, that was what I wanted to ask about, which is if you could characterize the process by which this particular decision was arrived at in terms of the teaching team, and then kind of weather report on how the staff at Washington is feeling about this?
Sure. So, I would say that I approach dual-language immersion and IB the exact same way I did as a teacher with my own kids coming into my classroom, which was, I find out where they are, I meet them where they are, and then I move them forward. And so, looking at our feeder schools and having students with dual-language immersion experience and students with IB experience, we had to make a plan to meet their needs. And so, what I, my approach was individually meeting with each team of teachers. So, I went each grade level, as well as our music and exploratory team, and just gathering feedback from them about how to approach these students, because doing nothing with them is not really an option, so.
Any other questions or comments from trustees? Seeing none, any public comment? And again, if you can limit your comments to about three minutes, then state your first and last name and spell anything that's unusual.
Melanie Charleston, President of Missouri Education Association. I'm just going to state that this is a fair amount of specialized FTE now being allocated to a specialized program that impacts a small number of our clients, our students within this district. And I would like to hopefully at some point broaden that FTE to impact a greater number. For example, we have a real need to broaden art specialists in K-5. Those are only three specialists serving nine elementaries, and I would prefer to see additional FTE gone into that sort of direction as opposed to a specialized program. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Gardner. I am a Paxson parent and the parent of a fifth grader. Casey, I'm sorry if some of these questions are redundant, but I do want to start off by saying thank you to Casey and Julie and Mark Thane and the entire MCPS administration for committing to two periods of Spanish for the 90 minutes per day for Paxson students entering sixth grade next year. Thank you. I will read through this very quickly. Next year, regarding next year, we understand that Washington has hired a temporary one-year teacher in lieu of, I think, Ms. Murphy, who is on sabbatical. And we understand that this temporary hire will be teaching the WHAT-I-NEED period, which I think is kind of the homeroom area, which will provide appropriate level Spanish for two days per week for standard IB students, and for five days per week for those students choosing the intensive Spanish IB option. Can you confirm that this single temporary position will meet all of those needs? And we are unclear who will be teaching or has been hired to teach the media arts exploratory in Spanish, and what is their FTE? Is this a permanent position? Are they ACTFL credentialed? That's the, I think, American College for Teachers Teaching Foreign Languages. Paxson PTA is able and willing to pay for a teacher to take this exam and obtain these credentials. And if they have not yet been hired, what is the recruitment process or plan for this position? Again, planning for next year hinges on numbers of incoming sixth graders and their varying levels of Spanish language skills and interests. However, many Paxson parents failed to respond to the survey intended to gather data regarding student numbers because they were either unclear on the program plan or did not receive the survey. Many parents remain confused about the differences in the program options, and no clear plan, it did not seem that a clear plan was outlined by MCPS. We believe that clear communication of the new IB program and options for more intensive Spanish, combined with an improved, clearer survey method, will provide more precise numbers and likely greater interest in the program. Is there a plan to improve this feedback? Can we help? We are happy to send home a letter or questionnaire with every fifth-grade student. And then regarding future planning, can or will MCPS be more proactive in planning as the program moves through seventh and eighth grades? A clearly presented plan well in advance of the upcoming school year, excuse me, advance of the upcoming school year start would smooth the transition to middle school for both students and parents. Ideally, a well-communicated plan for the 2019-2020 school year laid out by, we would love to say, November 2018, would provide time for comprehension, feedback, and consideration. Will you please outline the planning process for preparations for grades seven and eight as the intensive Spanish IB option moves through Washington Middle School? And state whether MCPS is prepared to provide financial resources and curriculum and budget planning for a full-time, a 1.0 FTE Spanish, preferably ACTFL-certified, teacher to meet the needs of all students, grades six through eight. One thing that we would like to point out is MCPS endeavors to meet all students at their appropriate learning level in all subjects. Just as our schools would accommodate a child excelling, struggling, or maintaining in math, this middle school Spanish program is an effort to ensure Spanish education at an appropriate level for all Washington Middle School students as IB, and its required Spanish language component is assimilated into the school. So, we feel it's really addresses, you know, where these children are at and not meant to identify a special group of kids. Certainly, anyone who's at that level of Spanish is, you know, welcome to participate at that level. So, that's that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment on this information item?
Yes, I want to make sure that a second voice comes out. Ted Geilen, to thank all of you, especially Mark Thane and Julie and Casey and Karen who worked this problem. Ted Geilen, G-E-I-L-E-N. Thank you, Marcy, too, being the head of the board, you're part of this. And to address a comment fearful that it might add additional labor, in the long term, there will be 30 students and one teacher in every class, in every period through the day, in every classroom in the middle school. And it's my understanding that in one or two of those classrooms, the teacher will be speaking in Spanish. That it shouldn't require any more FTE that you have, some teachers have red hair and some have black hair. That doesn't require any more FTE, and it doesn't really have to require any more FTE to be speaking English in one room and Spanish in the other over the long run. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item 8A2, which is to approve an out-of-country travel request. Mrs. Allen?
Well, I think the application was quite detailed. I would say that I'm imagining members of the board are right now looking at it and thinking, I'd like to be on that trip. I've heard that from pretty much everybody that's talked to me about it. As you see, it's a trip that will happen in the spring of 2019. It starts, you may have a question about the days, it starts in the middle of the spring break week and goes to the end of the next week. The students will actually miss five school days. But if you read down what they will be doing on those days, I think they will be getting quite an education.
Any questions for Mrs. Allen? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the out-of-country travel to allow Amy Miller's Big Sky High School English students to travel to France and Italy in March and April of 2019? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, seconded by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
I guess I'm, I mean, I am all about interdisciplinary learning. It's, you know, I am into it. This is an English class? And they're going to France and Italy?
Yes. I would not, yes, actually, all of the instructors are English instructors. One of the things I think is a beauty of this right now, and it has four instructors and four parents that are already committed to it. And you know, it's interesting, I thought about that at the beginning, but I think their purpose is learning in the international way. And I'm sure there will be some who are fluent in French who go along.
Sure. I have no qualms about it. I'm just curious to know how it's going to come back into the classroom and what their plans are. I'm wondering if we can make the request that these students will come and talk to us about their experience.
We would be happy to do that.
Any other board discussion? I'll just throw in my comments. I've, I mean, just, there's been different models of education, and at times early in years past, there's been concerns about students missing regular class sessions to take on this kind of an experience. But I think for students, especially in areas like Montana, which although we don't think about it as being a rural area in terms of Montana, but in terms of how you look at other communities where there's much more diversity, this looks like a wonderful opportunity. And especially with that parent and chaperone, parent and teacher chaperone, that looks like it would be a fairly robust way for everyone to actually experience what life is like in a different country, and whether English is, you know, the primary language that they're hearing during their travels. So, it seems like it's a very unique opportunity for everybody. So, thank you.
And I think if you look on the second page, there's really a reference to experiencing multilingual communities, and I think that's the point.
Thanks. Any other board comment? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, then all, then we've got a seconded motion, so all trustees in favor of approving the travel requests for Big Sky High School students to travel to France and Italy in March and April of next year, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to trustees present. Then we move on to the Montana School Board Association Resolutions. It's listed as information rather than decision-making. They begin on page 29. And for trustees who have been on the board in the past, who are, might recall what happens is there are proposals that can be submitted to the state Montana School Board Association from individual school districts, asking that state organization to either support or not support requests for usually resolutions or initiatives. And so, since at this point Anne Wake will be representing us at the semi-annual meeting in June, and there might be a couple of other trustees, the idea here in discussing these resolutions is to provide some guidance in terms of how our trustees who are at the meeting will vote. Of course, during the, I mean, having been to these meetings, there are times when there are amendments made, different discussion occurs, and so it's not really a binding recommendation because we trust that with the sense that the board provides to the trustees who will be representing our district, that they will have a sense of how to vote if modifications are made to any of the resolutions. And so, if you look at the documents, the first several pages, beginning on 29, 30, and 31, are just some general discussions as to how and 31, are just some general discussions as to how resolutions come to be. So what we really want to do is turn to page 32, which is the first resolution, which comes from the Billings Public Schools. And I'll leave it probably to superintendent Thane or trustee Wake to explain what the intent of this is to be. Oh, sure.
This isn't the only time these resolutions are going to come back. They'll come back in October at our Mcel meeting, just so you know. And Mcel is now going to be here in Missoula this year, so I would hope that all of you will attend, because there will definitely be changes to these resolutions in June. Thank you.
And could I ask one just clarifying question? Usually, the resolutions are presented to the state organization to see if there's support from the organization moving forward into legislative sessions. And so these are really recommendations that either the state organization bring forward with as an action item that they want to support, bring forward as saying they'll take no position, or bring forward as saying we actually don't, we will not support it. And so that final decision would happen in October because that's just before the legislative session.
That's all correct.
Okay.
Thank you. And I would preface my remarks by saying that a number of these resolutions will sound very familiar. We are entering legislative year, and the first resolution would amend statutes so that school districts collect A and B, which is our student funding mechanism. It's an acronym for average number belonging, for students who turn 19 years of age on or before September 10th. Currently, we have students who have not fulfilled their graduation requirements. Sometimes that's students who have disabling conditions, and it may take them a little longer to complete the requirement. So if a student turns 19 before September 10th, we do not get state reimbursement. This was proposed in the 2017 legislative session. At that time, the fiscal note on House Bill 178 estimated a cost to the state of $500,000 per biennium. And the Billings District has asked MTSBA to support, again, legislation that would allow for A and B funding for 19-year-olds.
So is there any board discussion in terms of any recommendations that anyone would like to make? Trustee Beers?
Yeah, it was. It was quick. I'll work on my follow-through. All right. So, so the current policy is students are eligible up to age 19, and this would raise it to 20. So we're only going up. What is, I guess my question, what's the national, what's the national average?
Most states actually fund students oftentimes till age 21, but virtually all states do fund 19-year-olds. Montana's somewhat of an anomaly in that if you're 19 by September 10th of your senior year, we do not fund you.
So I guess my question or the discussion would be, you know, why instead of raising to what seems to be the national standard at 21, is it, you know, strictly, it's one year of money? Or why aren't we going after the 21 instead of the 20?
I would suggest to you that our history in Montana is that these things go through multiple legislative sessions before they ultimately get adopted. I do recall the discussion around this item when House Bill 178 was before the legislature, and quite honestly, the concern we continually heard was the fiscal note. So I believe that the intent is, let's take the first bite and see if we can achieve the first standard, and then in subsequent sessions, hopefully, look toward expanding.
Yeah, absolutely, that makes sense. And this is something that I've, this would be the third legislative session that we've tracked this. So I think my ask would be to support this, but also in public testimony, individually and collectively, that we make people aware that, you know, this is a start and that we can benefit students more if we expand this in future legislative session.
Any other board discussion or recommendations? I'll channel Corbin because he's not here, but he consistently supported the idea that 20-year-olds should be given every opportunity to have a fully funded public education, especially when it's no fault of their own, that it's taken them a little extra time to get through high school. And so I, too, would recommend that we support this. And as trustee Beers pointed out, it's the third time the legislature will be looking at this, so maybe it will have some traction this time.
And I guess just, we always say this, MCPS would not kick a two-student out. This simply would allow us to collect A and B on this, right?
Right. That's correct. We actually have 19-year-olds or students that were 19 by September 10th of this year that we continued to enroll, and we continue to work with them to achieve their graduation requirements or to fulfill their IEP goals. We just don't get any state reimbursement for them, but our intent is certainly to continue to serve those students.
Anyone else have any comments? So seeing kind of nods around the table, it seems like the general consensus is to support. Okay. And then we move on to resolution number two, which I think, just in terms of efficiency, it's on page 34. And then if you look at, actually trustee or superintendent Thane can probably find it more quickly, but there are parallel presentations.
Page 43.
And at page 43, so Lockwood and Billings have both presented remarkably similar support for a funding mechanism at schools, but one of them is for seventh and eighth grade and one is for sixth. Is that the difference? Or trustee Wake?
The recommendation is to combine both of those. So they won't, when they appear before the delegate assembly, they'll be combined.
So just by way of background, we currently receive funding for high school students, so students in grades nine through 12 for career and technical education. Part of the rationale behind Billings' resolution is that students in grades seven and eight are also funded at the high school rate, and the expectation is that you'll provide experiences in terms of courses similar to those that might be offered in a secondary school. So their request is that students in grades seven through 12 benefit from career and technical education funding. And again, this is something that we've seen in previous legislative sessions. I would say, as Chair Holland indicated, the distinction I see in Lockwood's proposal is it just simply references middle school, which is generally considered to be grades six through eight. So slight distinction there, but I think in substance, they're largely similar resolutions.
So is there any board discussion? Any thoughts of supporting or not supporting? Trustee?
So I know that career and technical education covers some things, but not everything that is related to career and technical education. And we've particularly had some conversations around academies and CTE before. And I wonder, in MCPS, should there be more funding for career and technical education? What would be our readiness to kind of do more of it? Where would we want to put more dollars if they started coming here? That was a question.
I think the easiest answer to your question, in the middle schools, we relied on significant support from the Heeman Foundation to implement project lead-the-way engineering, design and modeling classes, et cetera. Those would fall under the guise of career and technical education, so continue to support those. Computer applications would be another that would fall under career and technical. So courses of that nature. Of course, in the high school programs, we have, you know, the health sciences, we've got family and consumer science-type courses, et cetera.
Any other board discussion or comments? Trustee Lorenzen?
I know the board can read this, I don't know if the public can. The current level for CTE in Montana secondary schools is $24 per student per year. The current level in North Dakota is $538 per student per year. We are so far off the mark. So it's just that we're sitting here looking at these shocking numbers, and I thought it's worth seeing.
And just to add further to that, it's not just North Dakota that at some point had some monies coming in from oil revenues to help support, but also Idaho covers 120, and Wyoming is 217, and we're at $24. So, and that's just at the high school level, not even at the middle school level. So, any other board discussion? I hesitate to say, but is there general consensus that we would support this change, especially if they're combined? And I don't know if the board has any positions, whether it would want to support six through eight versus seventh and eighth, since we have a middle school model in Missoula, you know, and not a junior high model. I don't know if that would make a difference. Trustee?
I would just say that my response would be, I would defer to whatever the combined resolution becomes out of MTSBA. Again, I would speculate, as I referenced with the last, that we're probably looking at the first bite here, and if we could accomplish grades seven and eight, that would be a step in the right direction. But certainly because of the way we schedule our middle schools, it would be great to have access to additional exploratories and elective opportunities for all students, grades six through eight.
Can we move on to resolution number three, which also comes from the Billings Public Schools, which is somewhat complicated? So superintendent Thane or trustee Wake, do you want to try to walk us through what is behind Billings requesting this resolution?
This is an interesting one. Billings recognizes that larger schools have the capacity to offer broader spectrum of courses to their students. AP and IB courses would be examples of that. And they recognize that rural schools in Montana may not have capacity simply because they don't have the enrollment numbers to support those courses. So the proposal from the Billings Public Schools is that if they were to use asynchronous learning opportunities and produce their courses to be shared out in the rural outer reaches of Montana, that the originating school district, in this case Billings, or if we were due to it, Missoula, should get some base aid for offering those courses. What I think is complicating in this resolution is it appears to be somewhat in conflict with funding for the Montana Digital Academy. The intent is, of course, that the Digital Academy afford that opportunity to students. And again, I think I misspoke earlier because the Digital Academy is asynchronous, which means it's not necessarily in real time. Billings' proposal would be that it would be synchronous learning. So if it's offered at 8:30 a.m. in Billings, students in roundup might access that class electronically at 8:30 a.m. So, an interesting proposal. My only concern would be that I would not want the legislature to erode funding for the Digital Academy in order to support this initiative.
Any trustee discussion? Trustee Lorenzen?
Well, there's some things about this that worry me. I think that an in-class teacher is always better than a digital or electronic teacher. I'm afraid that we would have the double-A schools kind of scabbing on the teachers at the smaller schools. I mean, they, we could theoretically, we could be displacing teachers in those schools. And there's something we have to be aware of, that colleges know what your school offers. So if you go to a school that offers AP and you don't take AP, they look at you like you didn't take AP. Now we've got, but the kids coming out of the other schools, they're like, well, it wasn't there, and so it's not held against them. So now you might have kids that theoretically could take AP, and it creates that onus on them to take it. Or they show up at college, you know, because right now, if you're, you know, certainly when I went to high school, there was no AP, and I got to college and all the other kids had had AP, but it wasn't held against me in my application that I didn't have AP because it wasn't available. So I think we have to really think about that. Now all of a sudden, AP is supposedly available, but it's available from someone via remote feed, and now when someone from a small school shows up to apply for college, they're going to say, well, you could have had AP, but you didn't. So.
I just want to reply to that comment to say that I hear and find really interesting the comments about teachers in small school districts, but I have a lot of empathy for a student in a really small school district who is ready for challenging level of work that may not be available in that school environment. And for that student, it may not be about what's held against them, but what keeps them engaged and keeps them operating at that there, you know, clicking along level. It also might, I mean, to look at it from a more kind of collaborative, we're all in the same boat as Montanans level, it might free up resources in a small school to allow that school to focus their limited resources on doing more things better with the resources they have, being able to offer, you know, other things, art, music, something like that, if they weren't having to try to spread themselves as thin. That's just a different perspective.
Any other comments? Trustee Beers?
Yeah, I guess my question would just be, in joining this conversation, I don't know a lot about the Digital Academy, but is that, is basically the motivation the same, absent it being real time? It's to offer those advanced curriculums or different curriculums digitally?
That would be correct. They have a pretty full catalog of available courses.
Okay. So yeah, that would be a concern for me. I think there's a, without, again, knowing the details, I think there's, you know, it's a pretty proven, a proven methodology of divide and conquer. Let's divide the limited funding sources between people trying to do the same thing and make them fight against each other. And also, I think, I don't, I think there's a conversation to be had about what are the, what are the smaller schools doing better than the larger school districts? And, you know, from somebody that, you know, grew up here in Missoula but has a lot of family in very rural areas, Browning and Wolf Point included, there are things that they're allowed to do, there are things that are, and I think with the notion that you're going to come into our community and know better than we do, is there tends to be a lot of pushback, and especially if the dialogue is one-way. And just reading this initially, it feels very one-sided, in that we, we're bigger, we're better, and we know better than what you're doing right now, so we're going to come in and help you. I think that's, you know, without knowing more information or knowing that there's dialogue and that there's smaller schools asking for this, would be another question. Are smaller schools asking for this? And if they are, you know, that's one thing, but if it's just the larger school saying, hey, you know, let's try to do this, and what would that take? Like if you were going to do, you know, it's not simply turning on a computer screen that says, okay, now you can see this where you couldn't before. You know, there's, there has to be development and communication between those schools, and, you know, what, where is that in this proposal?
It's my understanding from the Billings School Board that they're going to start doing this with schools that they've already approached on the east side of the state. And I think what they're looking at more than anything else is being able to share their resources with schools who don't have those resources and with students who don't have that opportunity. So it's more of in line with equity, not in line with not having a student there, I mean, a teacher there to be there, like the Digital Academy. They're going to have that student be able to see that teacher in any form that they can see it in. It's like, I believe Darby and St. Regis have shared a Spanish teacher this past year so that they, and they've done it in the same manner because they can't both afford to have a Spanish teacher. So I can see the pros and I can see the cons of having this, but if it helps the students, that's all I care about.
I just have a question of Digital Academies. How would it handle the on-hand experience that the children, or that the students would get at a regular academy in-house, and their internships, and the business community support, and the job shadows, and all that goes along with the experience of in-school academy?
Digital Academy doesn't have that now. And this is to supplement the Digital Academy with an additional opportunity.
And I would just say, this is different than a high school educational academy like the Health Science Academy, et cetera. This is really a digital school in that they just develop coursework and share that content and coursework, and it's licensed Montana teachers who develop the content and deliver it, and the delivery method is just called the Digital Academy.
Any other comments? I just have a more of a practical comment. What, I mean, I would look forward to the actual conversation both in June and then again in October because they- actual conversation both in June and then again in October, because they haven't been able to identify what anticipated sources of external opposition would be. They haven't been able to figure out if there's any internal opposition. And one thing that I've been trying to figure out is, who, which district pays the teacher? Do they work together to pay the salary for the teacher? I mean, just little things like that. This is a broad resolution, but I think at some point, it would be really important to identify the specifics of, you know, who counts the A and B? Is it the bigger school who's actually got the teacher, or is it the smaller, you know, just, there's some kind of, just the process kind of stuff that I would want a little more answers to, and they just don't have it yet.
And I agree with you. I think that what they basically wanted to do was put it out like a placeholder. They wanted to say that they recognize that there's a need and that they have those abilities, like, just like we do. We have those abilities to share with other people if we want to. But they, but they wanted to have some form of way of paying for it also. So, and that hasn't all been ironed out. So it wouldn't surprise me any if there wasn't a lengthy discussion about this, and it was probably tabled.
One comment about this is that it seems like something that's so kind of new and weird, and like, oh, my gosh, what would it be like? But people all over the country and all over the world interact with each other in ways that are very, very real at very, very large distances all the time now. Not so much in schools, because schools, despite Hatton's best efforts, are really late adopters. But this is, I mean, hybrid education formats is the wave of the future. It really is a way that education is going to go. And I think it's, to me, exciting to think about ways to use technology to improve students' experiences across the state.
Thanks. Does that provide some guidance? Is it okay to move on to resolution that isn't numbered from Bitterroot and Powell County, which is on page 38? And I don't know, Superintendent Thane, if you can explain, it looks like they're trying to get support for special ed.
And again, there are two different resolutions contained in the packet that will look very similar. The first is contained on page 38, and it's a joint resolution submitted by the Bitterroot Valley Education Cooperative and Powell County High School District. And I would also direct your attention in the packet to page 44, which is a submission by the Vaughn Public Schools. So first to talk about the Bitterroot Valley and Powell County High School submission. As you know, from your experience on the board, many of our elements in the funding formula are described as self-executing, and that was a result of the underfunded lawsuit. And what that means is, there's an automatic inflationary adjustment to those funds, a cost of living adjustment, essentially. That is not true for special education funding. And additionally, as represented in this resolution, there has not been any significant change to special education funding since 1992. The net effect is this. The federal mandate for special education states that the federal government should fund 40% of our special education costs. Currently, it's estimated that that's only funding 15% of our special education costs, and our state funding lags severely also. So general fund budgets are bearing a large portion of special education costs. The reason that the special education co-ops are critical to this conversation is many small districts may not have the need, for example, for a full-time physical therapist, but they might have a student or two who needs those services. So they participate as part of a co-op where a special services provider is shared among the members of the co-op, and the co-op has the capacity to employ somebody full-time, make it an attractive job. What is happening, though, is because the special ed co-ops are suffering the same funding woes that school districts are, they're essentially in jeopardy of becoming bankrupt and not being able to provide those services largely, again, to small districts or rural communities. And so there's interest in enhancing special education support for the co-ops. The Vaughn proposal is exclusive to co-ops. The proposal that's submitted by Bitterroot Valley and Powell County is inclusive of both co-ops and school districts. Again, being somewhat provincial, my interest would be, number one, we do need to support the co-ops in the state. It's critical to provide those services. But we also need to address special education funding in districts that are not part of the co-ops, but provide their own special education services, such as Missoula County Public Schools. So my ask of the trustees is to consider supporting the resolution that is the joint resolution from the co-ops and Powell County High School District, and not to only fund co-ops. School districts need help too.
Any trustee discussion? Seeing none. Generally, does that seem to be reasonable, that we support the broader position adopted in the joint resolution as opposed to the one that's just addressing the co-ops that we'll come upon later? And so we won't actually discuss that one later? No need to, so if we do this one? Okay. That provides some guidance, Anne? Okay. And then we move on to a Darby K-12 school district request, which is getting an exemption under the constitution and state law to invest money outside of the normal course of funding mechanisms. I guess just from my perspective, it seems like it's not going to even be possible legally to make this kind of change if it takes changing the constitution too. So, but I see how they bumped into a problem, but...
I think you summarized it well. Darby's in an interesting and maybe an enviable position in that someone bequeathed a large sum of money to the school district. And they took that money and immediately invested it, looking to get a significant return. They then discovered that they invested it outside of statute and constitutional provisions. So they immediately rectified that. It has to be invested through the county investment pool. They, however, would like to see that changed, because they want to essentially try and secure a higher return on that money. So the resolution is specific to funds that are acquired in a manner such as they acquired them. And again, it's a situation that I think is pretty specific to Darby, and that although many of us would like to find ourselves in that position, unfortunately, I don't think it will apply to very many school districts.
Any other trustee discussion or comments, or just generally, oh, trustee Lorenz?
So I was just thinking, if MCPS maybe didn't, or not, MTSBA decided not to put this forward, couldn't the elected representatives from Darby bring the same thing forward, and that would be more focused?
I would suggest that's correct. I think that school districts oftentimes propose these resolutions because they see the lobbying power of MTSBA and the, essentially, the institutional support as being valuable.
So would the trustees be in favor of not approving, supporting this because it's a unique situation, and if Darby needs some kind of action to be taken, let them take it? Or trustee Decker? Or trustee, anybody?
Well, I mean, if we have to say one way or the other, I would not be in favor of supporting this change to be made at all. I would, so, but we could also maybe just, you know, we don't have a dog in that fight. But to me, public money shouldn't be going around shopping for the highest possible return, because that's too much risk. And so, I mean, the whole idea is that we don't put public money in, like, high-risk bonds or high-risk stocks. I don't have any of that stuff, so I don't know. But it's that, we don't, we don't do that with money that we're taking care of for the people, so.
And just to note, there is a comment in the proposal that it potentially allows for conflicts of interest, because if someone has invested money in a certain high-risk area, and suddenly the school district decides to invest, anyway, it creates its own set of potential conflicts, I think. So, so is it okay to go forward with a recommendation that non-support? Okay. Then we move on to the Dismet Public School District, number 20. And it, well, it's interesting in that I think their district is zoned light industry around it, and they want some kind of protection so that they can have it become more residential around the school district as opposed to how it's currently zoned. But I don't know whether MTSBA has any say over how the city or county zones land. It seems like it would have to be brought more locally in, I mean, at least that's my understanding, that, you know, to have it rezoned isn't a statewide resolution that MTSBA would necessarily get involved with, but more something that if there's a unique need that they can show, and I don't know if it's a county, I don't know if Dismet's in the city or the county.
It's in the county.
In the county. So, anyway, that's just an initial thought. So any thoughts or discussion about this, trustee, or trustee?
I have opinions about everything. Huge supporter of Dismet School. I went there from first to eighth. But I don't think this is an MTSBA issue. It's ironic, they're addressing the proper school siting guidelines, which implies that the school was placed there after the industrial park, which, of course, it's not. It's a very old school. But, you know, much as I support them and would support them at Missoula County, I don't think this is an MTSBA issue.
Any other thoughts other than, I mean, that was my thought as well, but any other thoughts in terms of the different, so trustee Wake, do you have guidance for that? And then, we've already talked about Lockwood, we've already talked about Vaughn, and then we come to a proposed amendment to Principle 5. And so it's taking a stronger position on, rather than carefully analyzing vouchers, tuition, tax credits, and other forms of proposed direct or indirect support for sectarian education, it's modifying that amendment to Principle 5 to say oppose. And so trustee Wake, is there some back, is this coming from the board? Is this coming from a segment of the board of MTSBA?
This is coming from the MTSBA board, that the language was changed in October of 16. And so this is changing the language back to take a more firmer stance on the opposition of doing it, rather than have it be kind of a wishy-washy kind of language.
Any trustee discussion? Trustee Decker?
Just making sure that I understand, in this context, in this legal context, sectarian means religious, right? Well, like, you know, strong opinions about things political, I just wanted to make sure, because there are, in fact, charter schools that get that in the, you know, but this is, no public funding for religious schools is really what this is. Would that be another way to say the same thing? If that's the case, I'm all for it. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's true. I just have one question. I went and watched the oral argument before the Supreme Court that was held here in Missoula, and I believe it was tuition tax credits was the focus of that. And so there's, we're waiting a decision from the Montana Supreme Court to determine whether tuition tax credits can be identified to be going to sectarian schools. So there might be part of the language here that might be impacted by that decision when it comes out. But other than that, I would agree with trustee Decker. I like going back to clearer language. Anyone else want to weigh in, other than I'm saying?
Secretarian is also a racehorse, wasn't it?
Secretarian.
Oh, okay, sorry, semantics.
Just one closing comment, then. There is currently an MTSBA survey that has a deadline for submission of May 26. And they've asked all district to respond to the 10 proposals as well as the amendment to indicate how the board discussion went and what the board's sentiment is. So if it meets the pleasure of the board, I will respond to the survey based on what I've heard tonight. Does that meet with your approval? Thank you.
Now we move on to B2, which is to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Missoula Education Foundation. So we appreciate that members of that organization have stayed with us through this meeting. And so the administration is recommending that the trustees approve an attached memorandum of understanding, an MOU, that formalizes the relationship between the Missoula Education Foundation and MCPS. So Superintendent Thane, is there any specific aspect you'd like to highlight?
I would just say, in general terms, we have memorandums of understanding that come before the board routinely. This is special in that the Missoula Education Foundation's sole purpose, really, is to raise funds to support Missoula County Public Schools, and exclusively Missoula County Public Schools. We benefit extensively from the work they do. They're tireless in their efforts, and we certainly appreciate all that they've done, and the hundreds of thousands of dollars that they have raised in support of primarily classroom grants. The intent is to formalize the relationship, and that's important, particularly in the eyes of the Missoula Education Foundation, because as they reach out to foundations and philanthropic organizations and business entities, as well as individuals that might support their endeavors, they want to be able to communicate clearly that there's an established relationship. And it's important to us, certainly as a school district too, to recognize the hard work and the efforts that they make. The only real significant commitment on the part of the district that will be before you is that we will provide office space for the executive director of the Missoula Education Foundation. We've identified a space in the current administration building. When we make our transition to the Missoula College, we'll continue to provide that office space. It, again, demonstrates a clear link to the school district and a commitment on our part. The Education Foundation has an interest in identifying, essentially, almost via proclamation, some understandings between the organization. And I would say that that's akin to policies and procedures. So what we're asking you today is essentially adopt the policy, which is the formalized MOU that follows the standard district template. And then we'll work out with the Missoula Education Foundation, essentially, some statements of support that are mutually beneficial. So my recommendation this evening is that the trustees adopt the memorandum of understanding with the Missoula Education Foundation.
Are there any questions first, before a motion? Trustee?
I think this is a great idea. I was going to ask about the office space. So does that include basic stuff like a phone?
Telephone extension, yes, we'll do that.
And then a typo on the second page, about a third of the way down in B, fifth line down, the district is?
Oh, double district.
Double.
The district, the district.
Yeah. And that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? And just one, oh, trustee Lorenzen?
Well, yes, the question about the district, the district brings up the question of which district is in the MOU, because we are actually two districts. But broader question, I guess the sort of impression that I think a lot of the public has is that the Montana Education or Missoula MEF is actually very involved with private schools. I heard Mark say it was MCPS only, but I thought they were big with the private schools as well. So has something changed, or is there another organization?
No, this is, and has always been exclusively, Missoula County Public Schools. And back to your first question, we use the term the district. We're referring to essentially the unified district, K-12.
And I just had one clarifying question. So it's a three-year term of commitment to see how it's working, and then we can look toward renewing it. But it gives both parties enough time to see that the relationship is working in the way that both parties expected?
The normal course of action for us with MOUs is to have a one-year term. We had some conversation with Missoula Education Foundation about whether or not we needed that, because there was a 60-day cancellation clause within the agreement. But after some conversation with Pat, primarily, in order to stick with our standard adopted practice, we did have a term associated with it, but we extended it to three years as opposed to the normal one-year.
Any other questions, then? Seeing no questions, then we turn back. So is there a motion to approve the memorandum? a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding formalizing the relationship between Missoula Education Foundation and the MCPS Unified District moved by trustee Kendall is their second, second by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
So I, I will count myself as someone who didn't really know what the Missoula Education Foundation did before getting started with board service. And when I found out what they did, I kind of went, wow, that's, they, they really put that much time and effort into raising money and getting it out into the hands of teachers, and that's exactly what they do. So I'm really glad to see that there's a way that we can sort of support that work and formalize that relationship a little more visibly, because I was kind of blown away and continue to be so thankful for their work.
Any other board discussion? I will just also add, what I really appreciate is that they have a student advisory board who is heavily involved in making decisions about recognition of teachers in the schools. And I think it's really vitally important that, you know, students get to have a voice in recognizing when a teacher is providing an excellent educational opportunity, that it's nice to get recognition for that. And MEF supports both, you know, having those students serve and serve in a meaningful way, and then they actually get to do something that is meaningful for the teacher. So I really appreciate that component of what they do, not in addition to getting money into teachers' classrooms to help with classroom activities. Any other board discussion? Any public comment?
My name is Jill Tabor. I'm the board president of the Missoula Education Foundation. I'll be really quick because you all don't want to be in here longer than you have to. Speaking for our board, we are very thankful to be sort of defining this relationship a little bit more formally. We have a board of very, very passionate people about public education, and many of them have served on this board for literally over a decade. I'm not one of them. I served for a while, took a break, came back. But we have a lot of people on our board who are very excited about getting this money and this support and this recognition for teachers and providing opportunities for these students. We're thankful to the administration at the school district, Mark, and to the board for their support for this. So, thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Edinger. I'm the director of the Missoula Education Foundation. And I'm going to try to make this quick because Mike said that we're tired, Mark said that we're tireless, but this meeting's getting long. And it's quite warm. So the Missoula Education Foundation exists expressly to support Missoula County Public Schools. Our mission is to provide opportunities for enhanced student learning, foster teacher creativity, and recognize the exceptional educators in MCPS. We serve to benefit no other agency or organization, and since our inception in 2007 as an initiative of the MCPS Board of Trustees members, we have worked only to serve the school district as our exclusive beneficiary. Since our creation, we have operated as a largely volunteer effort of Missoula community members and have awarded over $150,000 to classroom projects for teachers during this time, in addition to thousands more in contributions via scholarships, teacher recognition awards, and other awards such as the Valentine's Day field trip gift earlier this year. Our grant cycle just closed on April 30th, and we received over $103,000 in requests from MCPS teachers for supplies, equipment, and other classroom materials that are not otherwise covered in the regular budget for the upcoming school year. While we cannot yet fund every single request we receive, we are pleased that we will be awarding more than $22,000 of requests in the coming months. The community members, donors, board members, and stakeholders involved with the MEF have invested significant contributions of their volunteer time, effort, and private monetary support to ensure that Missoula County Public Schools, like other school districts of similar size, has its very own education foundation. We continue to stabilize and grow, and we are poised to fill a role in this community that has been successfully capitalized upon elsewhere in Bozeman, Billings, Great Falls, Helena, and in other Montana communities with great success through their own education foundations. In addition to what we have already contributed as the foundation for Missoula County Public Schools, the potential for our future impact is tremendous. So I would just like to say that we'd be very grateful to see our relationship formalized after 10 years. And I'd also just like to thank Mark Thane for his support of our organization. Looking around at the board, I see so many familiar faces, people who support or aren't involved with the foundation and have been a part of our effort in the last 10 years. So, thanks for your consideration and supporting this.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. And we've got a second in motion. Then all trustees in favor of approving the attached memorandum of understanding between Missoula Education Foundation and MCPS, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And in the interest of efficiency, under B3, I think, and B4, are, is it easy to explain both of them together and then vote on them separately so that there's like one discussion, but we'll, we'll pull them out separately?
So the, the items are related. The first that was mentioned earlier under 3A and B are the resolutions. The first under A, the elementary resolution requesting the election assistance from the county election administrator. B is for the, from the high school side. These are resolutions that we bring before the board before the June 1st deadline on an annual basis. Under Article 4, this is the agreement that the county election administrator and MCPS has, has negotiated. It's consistent from what, from years past that we would enter into to memorialize the, that arrangement whereby they would represent us in running our elections.
Any questions of Pat? I have one question. What happens if we fail to authorize this support? Since I know it happened recently to a different school district.
It would be bad. We, we have over 20,000 absentee ballots, I believe, in Missoula County, and, and we would not have the equipment set up to, to do, so that's essentially a mail ballot. We would have to run a polling election, just given our lack of experience on the mail ballot side plus the lack of equipment. But then you would have the, the mail ballot side, which, I mean, essentially an absentee vote is a mail ballot. And the county invested quite a bit in their equipment to assist them with their election. So, yeah, this would be a tough darn deal for us.
Any other questions for Pat? Seeing none, then just because A is the elementary side, is there a motion from an elementary trustee that we adopt a resolution requesting county election administrators to assist with the elections during the ensuing fiscal year? Moved by trustee Kendall and seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of adopting the attached resolution, please indicate by raising your hand. That is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. And when I use that term, it means those trustees, they can vote on elementary and high school issues, not just elementary, but because we're a unified district with some trustees representing feeder schools that vote on only high school issues, we just kind of use that term of art, even though it's a bit of a misnomer. And then we move on to B, which is the secondary. And so it's the same request to adopt the resolution requesting the county election administrator to assist with the elections during the ensuing fiscal year for high school district resolution, 2018-12S. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Kendall. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Any board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of adopting the resolution that is identified as 2018-12S, please indicate by raising your hand?
I'm voting.
Yes, you're voting. If you choose to do so. And that's unanimous. Yeah, then you're, it's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to 4, which is to authorize the agreement that's found on page 52, and the recommendation is we authorize the administration to execute the agreement with the county elections office in the form that's attached, since that's a formal requirement that we submit. Is there any questions? Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Kendall, seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of authorizing the administration to execute the agreement with the county's election office in the form attached on page 52, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to award the bid for Russell School Furniture, I'm sorry, maybe we can combine these two, and I'm thinking since Burley was home not ill, that 10 and 11 are really authorized permission to grant the bids, but they already went out and got the bids, and so 11 is to award the bids. So if we can, we can deal with them separately or together, but they're basically quite related in terms of trying to make sure we're getting bids out in a timely fashion so that the schools will have the materials and that fixtures and equipment that they need when the schools open. And so this is Russell Elementary Schools, so it's an elementary-only trustee action item. And so, Mark, do you want to?
Again, I think you explained it well. You can see that there are four different schedules listed in the table on page, my page number's blurry, I can't tell you what page number it is. The first is office furnishings, which also includes the welcome area and reception area. The second is cafeteria furnishings, largely cafeteria tables. The third is classroom furnishings, which is the largest and would include desks, teacher, student desks, tables, chairs, teachers' desks, stools, et cetera. And then alternate number one, which is to essentially provide an office desk system and conference table with chairs. And again, that was contingent upon the bids coming in at a level that were within budget, and it's my understanding that they have done so. So we would want authority to exercise alternate number one also.
Any questions for superintendent Thane? Trustee?
I was just gonna say, I think it's important that we vote them separately, and, and I'm ready to vote.
So on item number 10, it's an elementary action item. Is there a motion to grant permission for the administration to solicit bids for the Russell School Furniture Fixtures and Equipment? Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. All elementary trustees in favor of granting permission to solicit the bids for the Russell School Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, please indicate by raising your hand. And I can't see, oh, Michael's hand's up. And so that's unanimous as to all trust, elementary trustees present. And then number 11 is that having received bids in the amounts that are identified on page 3 of our agenda, which as trustee, or superintendent Thane just went through, there were four different categories of furnishings and office products. Is there a motion to award the above-referenced vendors? It looks like it's J2 Montana School Equipment, J2 Office Products, and J2 Office Products. And so is there a motion from an elementary trustee to award the above-referenced vendors for the Russell Elementary Schools furniture? Moved by trustee Kendall, seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Trustee?
Sort of a silly thing, but it's Makerspace tables, probably not Markerspace, although they'll probably be used for markers sometimes.
I'm sure that was spell check.
Would be used for. Is there any further board comment?
Yeah, just a question. I guess I'm having trouble differentiating between Schedule 1 and the alternative number. It looks like they say essentially the same thing, but I might be reading it wrong.
Yeah, I think as Pat just referenced, that that's essentially an upgrade and enhancement in terms of what would be acquired. But you're right, it appears redundant.
It looks like it's about a $2,000 upgrade in terms of what they'd be using in the administration furnishings. Any other board discussion? Trustee Beers?
So is that cup holders on the chairs, or what is the upgrade exactly that?
You would ask that question on a night that Burley's not in attendance.
Maybe USB jacked or?
Eject your seat.
There you go. I'm sorry that I'm not in position to respond to your question.
Okay. If we could get clarification, it just seems like a big, you know, I just can't imagine what you'd do with a chair to upgrade it.
Well, it indicates that.
Oh, it's a system?
It's the desk. I think it's a, it's something else.
Okay.
Trustee Lorenzen, can you say that again? I couldn't.
Well, it's, the, the alternate is an office desk system and conference table. The Schedule 1 is a principal's office chair, and I would presume they would use their old desk. So my impression is that it's a new desk system, probably L-shaped.
And return on it.
Thanks for catching that. Any other trustee comments? Seeing none. Any public comment? Trustee?
And this is not necessarily germane to the upcoming vote, but I did ask Burley, because of the situation we find ourselves in tonight with both the permission to solicit bids and the action on the bids on the same agenda, to advance all the remaining permission to solicit furnishing bids to the board for approval early on, so then we can get all those out in a timely fashion and then come back for the bid award as each project goes out.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of awarding the above-referenced, awarding to the above-referenced vendors, I guess it would be the contract to provide the identified equipment for Russell Elementary Schools furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. And then we once again come to public comment. We try to provide public comment on non-agenda items at the beginning and the end of each meeting, in case someone can't get here at the beginning, but they want to still make public comments. So any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Then item 10, I just got a text from board council, which indicates that the question that she thought she needed to discuss with the board doesn't require a board discussion under state law. And so there's no need to have an executive session for litigation strategy, and therefore, we're adjourned. Thank you for all being here in a nice warm day. Thank you for staying.